The council meeting for Thursday, April 28, 2022 is called to order. Um, roll call please. Councilmember White is absent this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Amerusa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Mike, I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you. Can we please stand to the public?
I want to lay to the table to the White and the United States of America to the role of the which stands on the ancient and regard in the visible the routine.
There is no invitation on the agenda this evening. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the city council regular meeting, and I think Michael had something wanted to say this time.
Yes, this is very last minute, but item seven point four. Staff, uh, we need to get a little bit further into some of the legal aspects on the city side with the current regulatory environment for our water rights and our dish. So we will be looking into that. Getting some more information right back.
So I would entertain a motion on the agenda minus item seven point four.
Approve the agenda of here, April 28.
As amended.
As amended. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for April 28, 2022 as amended. Roll call please. Councilmember White is absent. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Amerusa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klein Felder?
Aye, thank you.
Item number three on the agenda is public comment. Under Government Code Section 5495, 4.3, citizens wishing to address the council on or any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's submittal form to the city clerk or following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda. And we heard speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and we request they state their name and their community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of California Government Code, the city is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. And I want to add to that because I think we probably should add that something frank about that even we would have to vote on, the council would have to vote on an emergency item to add it to.
Yeah, we can look at that and see if we can add that. That would definitely happen, so. If those are true.
Yeah, thank you. So is anyone present that would like to speak under public comment?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Nina Machado, and I'm the Executive Director with First Five Amador. I reside in Jackson, California. But we provide services for pregnant through age five children and their families and caregivers throughout Amador County, regardless of income, which I think is an important piece as well. So I have been remiss, and I have not been here in a while, so it is good to see you. And just to, for those of you who aren't familiar with First Five, we are funded through tobacco tax. Every county in California has a First Five, and the gift of First Five is that we get to customize programs to meet the needs of Amador County residents. And so some of the programs you might be familiar with that we do fund, the Imagination Library by our favorite Dolly Parton. And so we have almost eight hundred children in Amador County receiving a free book in the mail every month. So as they sign up, which can be from birth until their fifth birthday. Our commission spends probably about $22,000 a year on that, and we have quite a few children in 95669 who are receiving the books in the mail, so. Having to do that, we also help with the little free libraries, of which you have one in the park here, which is great. And we try and get children's books in there as we can as well to increase literacy levels and really offer those opportunities to families. And we also provide the kindergarten bridge program. And we try and have a, at least one classroom per elementary school each year, and it's to provide kind of a gentle transition specifically for our preferred, our target population is children who have had little or no preschool experience, but we have yet to turn anyone away that they ever had to, we would prioritize that way. And we will be holding that kindergarten bridge program again this year. So the main reason I'm here is to also discuss, we're trying to expand our playgroups, which we do currently in four locations in the county, Jackson, Ione, Jackson, Ione, Camayachi, and High Grove. And we really would like to expand to Plymouth. So we've been taking a look around at where we might have some locations that would be a good fit. We have talked with the elementary school principal. Don't know if they will have any space. They think they might have space there, but that's not solidified yet. And then also Lodge Hill was an area that, a location that we thought would be a possibility. We know that after school program there has been really successful and appreciated by the community. I hear that often. And so know that that could be a possibility if that would also be something that the city of Plymouth would be interested in. Currently, our programs are going back live in person, and families are very excited to be out in person. The playgroup in Jackson this week had twenty-four toddlers and their caregivers, which are grandparents, parents, moms, dads. It's just, it's great to see them in person. So we're excited to start being able to conduct those throughout the county. And like I said, we have tried to extend once before in Plymouth. It didn't quite fly, but that doesn't mean we won't try it again. And it sometimes takes things like a bus route. It takes a while sometimes for things to catch on. So I wanted to run that by you and let you know that if it is a possibility, we might be interested. I haven't been in the building in a long time to, you know, to check it out, but I think it would be an appropriate fit. And then we're trying to have some backups too with the elementary school as well. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you very much for the update. First Five was a wonderful program.
Thank you very much. And I will leave some of these things on the table here you can share. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
So what brought her here was actually there this weekend at this Pat's deal. And John Barrow agrees with me and we talked. So I was like, she's like, well, how do I perceive this? Well, I'll talk to the manager. I said, can we public comment immediately? This is where you have a yeah, could draw you know, there it is. See the growth. So that's a good, good start. So I'm glad you came. Yeah.
Thank you. We'll follow up.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in City Hall that would like to speak under public comment at this time? Mr. White?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. I just wanted to let you and everybody in the city of Plymouth know that we will be hosting a candidates forum for the candidates for the district of the county supervisor race that that election is June 7th. We have all four candidates who have agreed to come in up and to participate in a candidate forum on Thursday, May 5, St. DeMile, up at Bentor Park in Zinfandel Ridge. It will start at five o'clock. It will be a ninety-minute program that will allow all of the candidates to present their views on where they are in the issues and to provide the community an opportunity to ask questions of those candidates. I would really hope that as many of our citizens as possible could come and join us in that candidate forum and learn the issues and get to know the candidates a little bit better before that, before that election. So thank you for the opportunity to make this a bit knowledgeable to the folks, and I hope we get a really good turnout that we did in the form of the legislature.
And have you let the newspaper and the radio station go as well?
I have actually phone calls and emails into both of them at the moment. I've also, we presented the invitation to the Rotary Club, the Amador County Bitners Association. We tried to put it up on the Plymouth social media page. To do that, we need to have the permission of the property owner of the Bentor Park itself. There's a little bit of challenge in getting that permission at the moment because of the status of the park and the transfer to the city, so that's so we're trying to work through that tidling question at the moment to promote this as promptly as we possibly can, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. Is there anyone else in City Hall that would like to speak under public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom with us this evening that would like to speak under public comment? You can do so by pressing star nine. I'm seeing if I can get your screen.
I do have my own going.
But go right ahead.
Oh, I talked to the mayor of Ione, who's a pastor. And he's wanting to contact, he has already contacted Maria to do invitations. And he was gonna reach out to other pastors around Harry. Yes, kind of rotate and bring it up.
Okay.
In honor of his pastor, so.
Thank you. So we're going to close public comment and go to item number four on the agenda. It's appointments and presentations. 4.1 is appointment of councilmembers then to the ACTC committee. And my assumption here is since it's a mayoral assignment, that it doesn't require a vote, it's an announcement.
Yes.
Okay. You've been announced.
Right here.
And item number 4.2 is an ACRA update and introduction. Do we have someone here from ACRA?
I believe Justin Howard was coming up here by Zoom. I don't wear glasses. Dan, can you see Justin up there?
Not at the moment.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do, because we have a packed meeting, is we're going to move on. And if Justin comes on, that when, once we close the agenda item run, we can double that. Is that okay, Frank?
That's fine.
Okay. So we are going to move to item number five on the agenda, which is the consent calendar. I would entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
I make a motion to approve consent calendar as presented. I second.
That moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Please have a roll call there. Councilmember White is absent this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Amerusa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klein Felder?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to skip down because there's no public appearance for this evening to item number seven, regular agenda items, review and discussion interaction of TNT grant award policy process and administration. So you have a copy of the policy. Michael might have some things he wants to add to that. And we wanted to have just an open discussion. It's not required that we change anything tonight, but it's also the way the agenda is listed. It's possible that we can. Is that correct, Frank?
Yes. Yes, it's intended to get broad, so we.
And so I don't have a whole lot to say other than I think we can all agree that even though we did put in a lot of effort on the policy, it's not quite working as we had hoped. Whether that's making a change with the committee, providing our specific clarity on what to do on larger items, or how we want to even a budget for specific items at the beginning here, things like that. Like Frank said, tend to be a very broad item to let us discuss, and it may need to be another meeting after this too. But we don't need to open the discussion.
Okay. Should we go to the public for discussion first, or? Is there anyone in Zoom that would like to comment on this agenda? Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like, besides Maryam, that would like to speak on this agenda?
Well, hands are raised at this time.
Okay, are there any councilmen opening it up for discussion by the council? So anyone that has a question, comment, just out of the box thinking, just go right ahead.
Okay, I'll start. Um, yeah, this has been an issue. We thought, like I said, I think we tried really hard to make something perfect, but it's not seeming to do. And kind of the grow people day versus encouraging people. And that's not what sort, right? Because that was part of the problem. And where I'm straight was just come to the board. So my thought is that we try and figure it out where maybe this, you know, they open twice a year spring ball where people come for money. And it just comes straight to council. And we get them locked, so we're not eating up, needing that for meetings. That was the problem with this evening, it's too much time of meetings. You know, with the OTs, that's up. You know, it kind of goes, it's kind of hard to write that. But it comes back to council, so it's our decision anyways. And we're less closing. You know, and then if there's an emergency situation, then yeah, they could apply for emergency grant. You know, otherwise it kind of also you know, so that's one other thought process of how to kind of straighten, kind of still control it a little bit so it's not like it was a while ago.
And that's a good explanation of it.
Yes.
I wanted to ask Frank a question. Because if we went down the direction of doing two open parades per year, if the mayor appointed two different ad hoc committees, would that generate be a Brown Act meeting, or could they vet these applications and make recommendations to council this time of day?
Yeah, the, the issue with ad hoc is going to be that it's still going to be a reoccurring committee. And the regular ongoing basis is going to let, it was what would trigger it then, yeah.
So we need to clarify that.
Frank, what do other cities do that you represent? For example.
A lot of the cities frankly don't handle the committee at dispersion at the council level. So for, for a lot of grants, they'll set some parameters and then authorize staff and city manager to essentially work within those parameters. That's how most of the time happens, but this is a smaller city. So it's, you know, I don't, but yeah, that's generally how I've seen it.
Well, and that's exactly what my thought process is, is that these types of things should be generated during a budget process to begin with. You'd have guidelines and checklists, but if it came in and it met all of those, like the requirements of the, that the city has established the guidelines, it meets them, it meets our requirements and our desires, then until that budget item is exhausted, then it's eligible. That's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is, this is out of the box thinking, that we budget a certain amount for TOT. It comes in off the street during our budget process, but then we also budget discretionary funds that each council member decided what their project for the year would be. So you would decide this is what I want to fund with the discretionary. This, the board of supervisors does that for their parks and red funds. And that way, it wouldn't come for discussion. It could be on the consent agenda for approval because you've already decided that that's what you would like to fund and net your betting. You have the checklist, like we, we'd still have policy, but you checked all the boxes off, and that's what you want to do. So that's kind of out of the box, but it's worth discussion. I don't hear a discussion.
I'm, I'm not, yeah, just like, I guess a technical question on that. How would we get applications for that? Or the, so it could be, I mean, hypothetically, so someone walks in and talks to council member. So should it be that applicant, like we still have an application process? Are we thinking they come in the city then put that in like correspondence and let what people know? Or, or is it, it comes and a council member brings it to staff?
I was thinking it's both. It's an application process, and with some council members, they have certain projects or things they know from word on the street and what they've been discussing, that it could be told council initiative as well. Or they may see something, an application, and say, you know, I want to, I want to make sure this gets, you know, across the finish line and put their name on it. I mean, well, that kind of is how it worked in the past. You know, like with the playback across the street. There are a couple of those guys, yeah, they're saying, hey, that program's all the parks cost this person to keep repairing, be a parts store. It was outdated, it was getting dangerous. And we then all agreed as councils to the project. So it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of been like that in the past, so. Not really, but not necessarily.
And, and that would work if two council members said, let's say, okay, Peter decides, I really want to see this project happen, but it's more than my discretionary budget. So then it's up to you to go to someone and say, or to come back to the full council and say, I'd like some of the other pot of TOT because this project is worthy. And so then it's on you to, you know, you've done the betting. So I just thought it was an interesting idea because TOT funds are incredibly discretionary. You can, you can fund these projects that come in all the time, but you could also do what I'd like to see and have trees whenever, a plaque for every mayor. You know, there's, there is a broad range of things that could be utilized under the TOT funds, improvement to the city, which also encourages tourism, marketing, you know, it's not only the applications that come through the door. So I'm welcoming your thoughts. What's, what do you think, Doug?
Well, I'm a little confused on how, how, how broad-based these funds are being used. You mentioned trees. We talk, we're perhaps events that occur during the year, improvements to parks, the parks, exactly. So we sit down to the first part of the year and see how much money we have totally and, and, and discuss how many directions we want to go with that? Or do we wait till people come in and present their ideas from the public?
So if, if this may help, Doug, so we're not talking about every bit of TOT funds here. This is more our TOT kind of grant program. So we don't use all of the TOT money available for it.
I saw twenty percent on there.
There's, there's twenty percent for that type of usage, but that doesn't, that's less than that is what we use for the grant part of the program. So there is some things, and that would be at any time the budget, the council can say we want to do X project, Y project. The grants is more for our events or our projects like brought by a member of the community that they're asking for funding from the council for. So this is just kind of that, that smaller piece. So not to get completely off and every project that we could do, there's plenty of other things like trees and plaques, as the mayor's talking about. That can be something that we do outside of this too, if you have a city council law. Or for instance, like Rotary brought back one, and they were interested in doing something. Then that would be something that falls into that grant program.
Are we trying to stop the folks coming in and asking for money on the last minute? Is that a, a little more planning?
Uh, it's partly, the, the main thing, so before, before you, before you came here, you know, Doug, there was a lot of applications, and then there had to be a lot of discussion. We made a good start with this policy. But we realized what was still happening is there was supposed to But we realized what was still happening is there was supposed to be a committee. But basically, we, we've actually got zero applications that, that met the requirement for the committee. Everyone brought in once over because that previous chairman said, well, if you're over, it's going to go straight to council. So we added a whole bunch right to council, we've got another one tonight.
Part of that is COVID.
Yes, part, part is COVID. So what, what you're seeing, your other council member suggests is ways to make it easier to get those funds to some of those groups. And ways to make it easier on staff, easier on council, and to do the right thing. Kind of put the money there with the original.
Marion, do you have any questions, comments on this agenda?
Yes, I raised my hand. See, I, I hope you can see my little hand icon is up. Anyway, when I, when I looked through this, I guess I'm just looking at it from like a really simple point of view. And I thought, I, I'd like to see that it's just, a sentence is just added in there that anything, any request over $5,000 would need to come to the council, but that all those criteria still needs to be met as far as everything that's required in the, in the current, the, the current policy. I also, my thoughts also were, I, I would like to see the TOT committee get up and running again. I, I didn't realize that as a council member, I'm able to have somebody on this TOT committee. And I think that it's reasonable to have this group of people. And especially if they're the, the, the people in the community that they do have businesses. And that's, and so they've got some real skin in the game. And it would be really nice for them to have an opportunity to, you know, they, they, they know what's going to help their businesses also. And when we help their businesses, obviously we help Plymouth too. But I, I'd like to be able to get input from committee members for the, the request there of $5,000 and less or less. Still following the, the submittal deadlines. And it just seems like if we could get this committee together of, of five people again. And we just say, you know, all you have to do is meet, you know, October, January, April, July, four times a year. And they can do it via Zoom. And if there's nothing for them to review and approve, then they don't have to meet. But again, anything over $5,000 comes to the, the council, but the applicant still has to follow all of these requirements. So that was just my thought when I, when I saw this.
And just if I could make clear on the policy, the, the TOT community's advisory right now has been constructed. So all things ultimately go to the council, even everything from $5,000 to over $5,000. I think what's been happening is the, the policy they're talking about with the committees. The policy was arguably vague about what happens if it's over $5,000. And so it's been going straight to the council and bypassing the committee. But right now, the TOT committee is advisory, so everything's still most of the council. Just want to clarify that.
Right.
And I also.
Do you think council member appoint one person?
I think that's, I think that's probably how we had it. Yes, I think that's how it's constructed right now.
Is this the way it works now?
Yes.
But what else happened?
No, it's, it's happened. It's just been kind of, I don't know if the word is defunct a little bit, the COVID and everything, but it's still a committee. And if there are, is, is an op, if there's a need to reconvene it, then that would all be looked at.
And I also want to clarify something. The, I don't think the policy is that big. The policy states that the maximum grant request is 5,000 per application. Nowhere in this policy does it say, if it's $5,001, it comes to the council. All applications would come to the council regardless of the application. Because what the committee was formed for is to vet those applications and make recommendations to the council. So.
Yeah, that's a really, I, I tend to agree actually. So it wasn't like to limit it to 5,000, but that was kind of practice that has been going on.
It was an interpretation.
And, and, but the reality is that I still think there's big council and it's at least among some of the members of council will still entertain those. So in hindsight, I mean, there. So the software for this council to look at, okay, do we want it? We want to limit it 5,000, now's the time to make that clear. Like to, to say that that's what we want to do or as a city. Or if we want to say we can allow more than 5,000, now, now's the time to discuss that. Do we want to keep the committee? Do we not want to keep the committee? All that's, all that's for a discussion.
Do we try and add about that regarding $5,000? So I personally find $5,000, it's a, it's a, it's a good number. Obviously, if, if, if any item was already, it was through the committee.
No, it almost did to me.
Yeah, so let me just.
Yeah, it didn't, it doesn't, doesn't come, doesn't come to council unless.
It all comes to the council.
Yes, right now, everything would come, everything comes to council right now. It, the only difference is if it's over 5,000, it's becoming straight to the council.
Or if it doesn't make it through the vetting process with the committee because you have a policy sheet and you have boxes to check on, and it doesn't meet that criteria that was established by council.
So everything comes to council through, through a, a, a general?
Yes, it would be a general. And yes, if it, if it goes to the committee and the committee, it meets the screening requirements, then it would come to the council. Everything as an agenda item.
The only way that something would not come to council as an agenda item would be also if we were a bigger city, like you discussed, where there is need funding. At first, those smaller grants could be a group of staff. Otherwise, I don't think there's ever going to be a point where that type of committee can spend their money. So with the council.
But that's, I mean, I've worked with a lot of budgets. And that's the whole point of doing budget items is to say, we believe this, this amount of money is in this line item, do not use. So you, as a manager, would have the discretion, or we haven't done that yet. But if you do a line, line item for a public works position, you are authorizing expenditure up to that limit. And so if we authorize TOT in the budget, the line item has been approved. So this, the, all of this is, is how we go about spending it, which I think I've mentioned a lot of times, should be clo, more closely tied to the budget cycle and the budget and what we have to work with. And, you know, I, I do think it would, it's worth looking at to have discretionary funds for council members. But also have the pool of funds for the TOT that we could change the policy and say, the grants can't exceed $5,000, but the committee can vet and, and recommend. And we go on the consent calendar because the amount of money spent authorized from the budget. So I don't know. Marion, did you have anything else?
No.
So what's the wishes of the council to discuss this again? Or?
Sure.
Okay.
Because Keith should have.
That's true.
Good point.
Okay, so let's bring this back to another agenda. But good discussion, lots of ideas.
The, the only other comment I have is if we, if we, if we revisit this, I, I'm glad that we got the discussion started. If we revisit this, I know for me, I'd like to reach out to some of the people in the, in the, in Plymouth that have been on the committee before and find out, are they interested in, in being on the committee? And I'd like to get some feedback from people who were on the committee. Did they find it useful? So that's all.
Thank you, Marion. So I think the consensus is to bring this back. And seven point two on the agenda is review, talking about TOT. Review of smoke chasers, TOT application for $10,000. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone on Zoom besides Marion that would like to speak on this agenda item? Please press star nine to raise your hand.
Any at this time?
Okay, is there any council discussion on this agenda item?
I, I just, I just noticed that in the paperwork that was submitted with this, it, the application did not have some of the information that we would require if this was under $5,000. And so that was an observation that I had. And so I wondered, from the smoke chasers, it says that they have a budget of $40,000, but we don't really know where that budget is, is, or where that 40, how that $40,000 is, is being spent. Yeah, to be honest, my first thought was $10,000, to me felt like a bit much.
Thank you, Marion. Peter?
Um, I think it's a, it's a worthy cause. You know, I think it's something that really kind of that our community is, and the surrounding community are hurting there. Yeah, I mean, it's something that's also a pilot program, disturb something statewide. Don't be a sponsor, that would be a good, good faith, I mean to, you know. For that, yeah. You know, just to take it to, it's good overall. To support.
The council members, they don't?
Pardon, pardon the pun, but it, it is a hot issue. And I think it's, it's a worthy cause. I, I'm with Marion, I think camp housing is, is kind of a big number in terms of the 40,000 total. I'd be willing to perhaps think something less than that. But I, I do feel that we, we need to, we need to participate. If, everything's been going on the last couple of years.
Well, I think it's a very worthy cause. I, this has been one of my issues since coming onto the council because I've worked in conversation, conservation, conversation too, conservation efforts for the last 25 years. But we keep going back around in a circle with the TOT. I thought the amount of request was high. And as Marion's pointing out, we're not getting the degree of details. We're not getting the after project reports, budgets attached to applications. So I would also be, tend to agree to some amount, but I would tend to not support the amount of $10,000. So is there any other discussion or emotion?
Yeah, I, I'd also be interested in, in knowing out of their $40,000 budget, how, how much money have they received so far? I, I went to their, their website. And I do want to say, I mean, we, we all agree it's a very worthy cause. And I think it's absolutely beneficial to so many of us. But it, it looks like they have a number of sponsors already. So I'd be, I'd be interested in, in knowing what they've raised so far. And then also looking at the, the TOT, the grant policy. It does say that the whole purpose of it, to benefit the city of Plymouth, obviously, by increasing tourism, promoting town awareness, or encouraging economic development. And I, and I think that this smoke chasers event does all that, but, but not, that's not the, the, the primary, that's not the primary goal of the event. So I don't see this event as really increasing tourism, promoting town awareness, or encouraging economic development of the city of Plymouth. So.
Well. I, I. Jeff and I sat down and did this, and I think I've said this one before, and I'll say it again, and ran a lot of numbers. And he was a numbers man, and a very good numbers man. And we concluded at the end of the day, when we sat down and went through this, that for every dollar spent, we got 30% back. And 30% return on your money, you're never going to get a bank. It's still a good investment. You know, just because there's going to be people coming all over the place. So it does, they go to our registers, they go to our gas stations. I mean, we do receive, I mean, it may not be spent a night. But, you know, and maybe somewhat, you're trying to say. But, but there is a return on the money we deal with these things. You know, and it doesn't bring people a fair amount. So again, it's, it's generating the cash. So it's, it's not, it's not in that zero. There's a benefit outside of promotion too, because they're going to be putting this in all the promotional stuff. And so we'll be promoted outside of the area, not just locally. So there, there is a return on it, for sure.
Yeah, and thank, thank you for that, Peter. And I, and your, your point is, is well taken. So, so thank you for pointing that out.
There is another option as well. We would have the option to table this, to continue this agenda item to the next meeting, ask for the additional information that is not there, and, and ask for a representative that can answer questions to be in attendance of that meeting.
That's true.
Any thoughts?
I'm down with that. I'll do that too. It's a good idea.
Marion?
No, I think that sounds really reasonable.
And, and Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure, did you have a public comment? I can't remember. Did you have on this, okay, sorry, just want to make sure.
Yeah, we do have a raised hand on, if you want.
There you go.
Is there someone on Zoom that would like to speak on this agenda item? Amy?
Hi there, sorry, I have a child emergency right when you guys asked. Yeah, I wanted to say, I guess I wanted to say that I, I see the idea that it isn't potentially bringing in revenue from outside of the area to Plymouth. But I felt, I feel like it's bringing in people that actually live here. And, you know, maybe it's not tourist related exactly, and we're not tourists. But it's also, it's, first of all, it's, it's educating the people around for a, a real emergency that we do see, that's, that's a real emergency here. And it's also, you know, bringing people maybe from Jackson. And maybe that's not tourism necessarily, but I do believe that it is. And then also, it's the first of its kind. And I think it's going to be everywhere. And it, it's kind of like, like the, I'm hiding in my bathroom to make this public comment. I'm so sorry. I don't know, I feel like it's a, the, you know, the first one type of thing. I think it's needed for the community. I think it's bringing in people that are actually in Jackson, in Ione, maybe in El Dorado County. It's educating them and they're going to spend money here eventually. And anyway, I, I think it's, it's worth it. And I also wonder, where's the line? When, where do you draw the line? If you, if you agree to it for other people, how do you kind of not agree with it this time? You know, and like where, I get the idea of, you know, reading the definition of what it actually is for, but maybe that should be happening every time? So anyway, that's my public comment.
Amy, do you think it would be possible to supply some additional information and a detailed budget about how different amounts, if they were supplied by the city of Plymouth, would fit into your budget? For the next, to the next meeting?
Uh, I didn't understand the question again.
She's not with the smoke chaser, just so you know.
This is Amy, what?
Amy Gomes.
Oh, Amy Gomes, hi, Amy. Yeah, I, I, so I thought you were with the smoke chasers answering questions.
I think it would be great, no, I think it would be great if they, well, I feel, I feel very passionate about it because, I mean, it's, it's, I'm going to go to it and I live in Plymouth, you know? Like I don't go to most of the events that are here. I'm going to this, bringing my kids, I'm having all my girlfriends come so that they can make sure that they, you know, are able to fortify their properties. And I, I don't know, I just, I feel that we need to be ready for fire dangers, emergencies in general. And I, I just wonder why sometimes the other, you know, I, I agree with the idea of, you know, tourism and, and even the wine country. But the wine country people are already here. They're going to be here. I'm not saying that I don't, you know. I'm not saying that I don't, you know, I advocate for them also. But this is a new sector of people. You know, it's people that live here, that are going to be coming to our community and seeing it for the, maybe, you know, they're people that we deal with every day. So I just feel like maybe it's not, yeah, it's not tourism from full sum or something. But I think it's better, because it's tourism from our local area.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I will hope that the Smoke Chasers group finds out what a nice advocate you were.
I know. Me too. I hope they come the next time.
I think there might be a consensus of the council to get some additional information from the applicant and bring it back on the very next agenda. Is it, is that a consensus? Okay, Stan, about that?
Yes, also, we have three separate councils really bringing up. So the issue we're, what we're going to do is ask them to come back with different funding amounts.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number 7.3 on the agenda is review and approval of employment agreement with Stephon Chapman for interim city manager, contract amount of $60 per hour. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the contract?
Yes.
Frank, you have a comment?
Hello? It's challenging to make it tonight. He was wanting to, but there was something I cannot forget, some scheduling complex.
Let's speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak on this agenda item?
Anybody?
Thank you. Okay, we'll have council discussion if there is any needed. So Maryann, did you have anything to add or question?
Yeah, I need to find something in my notes. And I apologize, I'm kind of having some technical difficulty on my end with the audio. I think I have fixed it, and I do think it's on my end. I don't think it's on your end. But you guys can hear me okay, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to comment on was when I was looking through the contract on page two, at the bottom of page two, item F, where it says, "Conduct research in administrative practices so as to bring about greater efficiency and economy in city government. Develop and recommend to the city council long-range plans and policies to improve city operations and to prepare for future city growth and development." I was really happy to see that in there. And I'd like to say that, just, I want to express my feelings that I would really like to see the interim city manager really focus on that. I mean, that's just one of many bulleted items. Obviously, a lot of things that are really important. I feel like that is particularly important. I'd like to see somebody come in and really take a look at the the practices that we already have in place, and what's going well, and what are recommendations for improvement. So that's all I have on that. I was happy to see that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Maryann. I agree. It's a result of, I think, several communications of council discussing the fact that we want to know where we are. And someone coming in might have a different outlook. And during their term here, as short or as long as it is, could really provide some feedback. So Doug, did you have anything to add, question, comment?
I love the idea of fresh eyes coming in here, looking over our whole city and how it operates. I think this gentleman has a lot of experience with at least three or four cities he's been city manager. And I've talked to him several times on the phone. He's very professional. I hope he will, he's obviously probably going to start next month. I hope he's here at least three or four months and doesn't get a job like in one month and a month, because it's very possible. Because he's coming interviewing for jobs around the state, so hopefully he's here for a period of time, so he relieved Michael and can get some fresh eyes on the city. I think this is, it's a good thing. And I hope it all works out. Thank you.
Peter, did you have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Are you starting forward? Do we want to go back to the public after hearing the council, or are we?
Your complaint.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion on item number 7.3.
Motion to approve the employment agreement with Stephon Chapman for interim city manager, as covered by the amount of $60 per hour. Vice Mayor?
It's been moved and seconded to approve an appointment contract with Stephon Chapman for $60 per hour as an interim city manager. Can we have a roll call note, please? Councilmember White is absent this evening. Councilmember Sin.
Aye.
Councilmember on Riverside. Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Plines Elder.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I believe we have Justin Howard on Zoom now.
He does, but now he's gone.
Oh, is he gone? Oh, we saw the name.
Yes.
Frank, Frank's like, he's here, can you see it? The Agra.
Well, we've approved the amount for that, but let's have the same agenda item come on the next agenda for the introduction of that, and we'll make sure Justin knows. Okay, item number eight on the agenda is council staff communications brief, or signing off beside the brief, on managing general interest. Item 7.1 is city manager's report.
Um, I do not have a lot for the city manager's report. I will provide basically one, I'm basically still working on. Basically, a list of ongoing items to the city. Other than that, it looks like about a few items from this meeting that's going to come back for a future meeting. And I will provide those on that. It has been a pleasure working with all of you.
I just want to point out, he has a list going. And Rex also left a list of things, and how things are going with the city. So that will be, the next person will at least have some direction. They're not going to step in here cold, like, Suzanne, what do I want to do?
I will, I will also give Mr. Chapman a call. I've spoken with him once. I was obviously hoping he'd be here today.
Is there anyone in city hall that would like to comment under the report that we heard from City Attorney? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to raise their hand and have a comment on the city? Okay, item 8.2 is
So I have a few things, and I grabbed a piece of paper here. Speaking of Agra, and I emailed Michael today, and I think this is going to go up on the city's Facebook page. But Justin Howard, the executive director for Agra, did reach out to some of us and asked us to spread the word of this Summer Fun Days 2022 in Sutter Creek. Amateur Rec is excited to offer a summer camp in Sutter Creek. And it looks like it goes from June 6th to August 5th. So we'll provide more information about that. So that's that. I also wanted to mention, I forgot my notes here. But in a couple of days, it's National Prescription Drug Take-Back Day. And I think that's important for everybody in the community to be aware of. And so if you have any unused medications at home, you can take those to the sheriff's department, and you don't need to give ID or anything, and they'll take it. And they'll appropriately and properly dispose of your medications, which is good for the environment, good for safety, good for all sorts of reasons. So that's August 30th, or excuse me, April 30th. And then finally, I'm going to request for a future agenda item real soon. And I had hoped that I would do it for this meeting, but I didn't get it together. But this has to do with recognizing May as Mental Health Matters Month. And so I'm going to read something here, but to my, I'm going to read something here. But to stand in solidarity with cities and counties across California to stop the stigma surrounding mental health, I'd like to propose to the council that we adopt a resolution to recognize May as Mental Health Matters Month in our community. By officially recognizing May as Mental Health Matters Month, we can help unite our community members and Californians throughout the state with a shared vision of improved mental health and equality. So I have a template for a resolution. So I'll email that to staff. And if we can get it on the next agenda, I'd be grateful. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, I don't have much. I've had discussions with Michael. I probably have a lot of agenda items, but we've already got quite a list and to-do list. And I do appreciate the conversation required regarding the take-back the drugs this Saturday, Maryann. I think there is a drop box at the Safeway and a drop box in the Ione Pharmacy as well that could be helpful and local for those. And those are open all the time. So if there's nothing else, we're going to move the meeting. And we're going to close the public side of the meeting. And we're going to move into a closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Sorry, if I may just get on the record, there are two items in closed session. One involves cross-rail property negotiation with the information list on the agenda and open play towards violation of city manager.
Thank you very much. Wanted to tell everyone that came and put up with our little meeting here. And we got a couple ladies. Thank you.
Just do it and walk it out.
Right.
Good evening. Council considered two items in closed session, one matter of performance evaluation, the other consider real property negotiations. Council was provide information by staff, discussion, and received information provided direction and otherwise no report of action.
Thank you.